Session, would there be a motion to approve the events of those meetings?
So moved.
Support. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, vo call.
Mrs. Stone, yes, Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes. And next on the agenda is the approval of the treasurer's financial report for July of 2012. Jacobs.
Yes, you have the financial reporting, your packet this evening. There are a couple of items in here that of note. We received notification this week that the John Peterson Special Need Scholarship Program, those scholarships have, are in the process of being awarded. And not knowing how that will affect our foundation payments, depending on who's applying and whether or not they've received the scholarship. Parents have the ability to send their students to another district and the state will reduce our foundation payment anywhere from seventy-two hundred dollars to twenty thousand, depending on the student and the special needs. So I will let you know as soon as I hear whether or not any of those scholarships from our district have been awarded.
Do we know if anyone applied?
I don't know.
You don't know that?
No, and I think, I don't know if that's private or not, but from what I can see from the foundation payment website, can't see anything. So I don't know if that's a, that's a good sign that there's no reductions yet, I'm not sure. So does that kind of place up? I will keep you posted. A little federal programs update. The flexibility waiver that was approved for Ohio includes the fact that supplemental educational services are no longer required. Public school choice transportation is no longer required as a set aside. The ten percent set aside for professional development for districts and district improvement is no longer required. And the twenty percent set aside for reading intervention for LEAs and school improvement is no longer required. When the allocation is like ours, over five hundred thousand dollars, those are, those are big numbers. So that money is going to be set aside for direct instruction tutoring and services for those students most in need. I do have one budget and purpose clause this evening for the high school. We anticipate that the rest of the budget and purpose clauses will be on their way. And also there's a piece regarding medical insurance. We've actually been working with our representative, Mr. Marinelli, to see if there's any way that we can, you know, make those, you know, have any kind of reduction for the medical costs that we're seeing. We're going to be actually taking proposals to the insurance committee in September. We're going to work on setting up a meeting for that. An actual plan that he's put together, I mean, we'd be able to save the district almost twenty percent on medical insurance, but it would have to be approved by both unions. But that is in the works, something that we're working on. The other piece that we need to note, MedMutual is no longer in the business of renting their, their medical network, their insurance network, to consortium like Omerisa. So they're kind of being the bully in the playground at this point and not allowing us after December thirty first to lease under their network unless we use their third-party administrator. Problem is, some of the districts that have moved to that third-party administrator have had a nightmare in setting up all of the claims to be settled through this new administrator. So we're looking at the option of possibly changing networks. So we're going to see what that means in the next couple of months here. And that is, that's the bulk of it for this evening? Are there any questions?
Sounds like the insurance committee has some work to do.
Yeah, the insurance committee definitely has some work to do. So Kevin and I are going to try and get them together after everybody gets settled back in. So it'll probably be mid-September where we'll look at putting that meeting together.
Is that the committee I volunteered for last night?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, Paul.
Would there be a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
We already did that.
Okay, no, we didn't.
Your discussions.
We did?
I moved.
Thank you.
Second. Second.
I don't know where I'm at.
Any further questions? Vo call, please.
Mrs. Stone, uh, yeah, Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes. Okay, we have several items on an addendum to the agenda and you'll find those in your packets. We're asking to add items under section X Personnel Certified, replacing section A with a new section A and adding section C and then additional items or substitute items under section 10, items A and B. Would there be a motion to approve that addendum to the agenda?
So moved.
Support. Any discussion? Anything for the discussion or clarification? Vo call, please.
Mrs. Stone? Yes, Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes. And next presentations to the board, Mr. Kimmel, are there?
I'll reserve the presentation to my section of the report.
Any commendations under the commendations section? Next, our committee reports and we'll begin with a legislative report from Mr. Stone.
Not really necessarily legislative, but I think it's interesting. On Monday, the State Board of Education unanimously agreed to postpone the release of the 2011-2012 report cards in light of the attendance issues that they're having with reporting of attendance. Otherwise, it also looks like they're going to probably hold off the performance index rankings as well, but I thought that was at the very least interesting on the legislative side. There seems to be a couple of bills out there, Senate Bill 341 and 342, which are more changes towards SERS and STRS. The proposed changes, they have to deal with the agent service, employee contribution rates, cost of living adjustments, and expanded board authority. But they're just sitting out there in subcommittee, it's not anything that's been pursued.
Any additional comments or questions for Mr. Stone? Okay, athletics, Mr. Sheever?
Well, as everyone knows, we are in the fall sports season and this evening golf teams playing a home match against Hovers and Dusky. And tomorrow night is the first night of Friday Night Football. We have a home game against Elgin. And by next week, everyone should be competing. So on behalf of the board, we want to wish all of our student athletes and the coaching staff the best for this season and look forward to getting out and supporting the kids. That concludes my report.
Okay, any questions, comments for Mr. Sheever? Next is Pioneer, Mrs. Stone.
We had a meeting on Monday night. It was basically a pretty usual meeting for this time of year. We did do a little bit of walkthrough and solve some of the new welding equipment, some of the new graphic arts equipment, and interestingly enough, the new baby cribs in the daycare facility, which all of a sudden, even though we, younger people probably can, but us older put our babies in cribs, the sides went down. Can't do that anymore. Can't do it anymore, so they had to get rid of all of them and get all these new fancy little things with the plexiglass on the side so the kids can see out, but it was pretty. But they are getting ready for students, I believe they start next Tuesday.
Tuesday is on Monday?
Is it Monday? Okay, and then everybody's on Tuesday. But it's looking real good over there, so.
Okay, questions for Mrs. Stone? Thank you. And student achievement, don't have a lot to report. I was fortunate enough to sit in on a staff meeting prior to this meeting in which the staff was going over the agenda for the upcoming waiver day and it looks like there's a lot of information regarding student achievement, a lot of work is going to be kicked off on that day, so that's certainly a good thing. And that's all I have to report unless there's any other questions. And wellness, Mr. Wilson's not here this evening. And the final committee report, Bell Tower. Sounds like there's an upcoming meeting at some point.
September fifth, I believe, Wednesday. Looking at some, some more design options and continuing efforts and breaks on the fundraising ideas and getting some estimated cost on materials and supplies to replace the Bell Tower project on the, we'll go on the elementary side.
Okay, any questions about that? Very good. That concludes our committee reports and move on next to the superintendent's report. Mr. Kimmel?
Well, happy to say school started very smoothly, thanks to the staff. This has been a challenging year through all the reductions that we've had in staffing, both at certified classified level equal about thirty-four positions. And so because of those cutbacks, it really put staff in positions that they have not been in for quite a while, if ever. We changed the complete schedule at the secondary building from going from block stairs to single periods. A lot of our teachers have four or more preps. There's very little wiggle room with class sizes. A lot of classes are in the upper twenties approaching thirty at the elementary. With the reduction in the parapros, a lot of our staff are being asked to supervise kids longer, no outside resource, outside recesses that are supervised by the aides. The teachers are taking the kids out. And so we're asking our staff to do much more than what they've been asked to do in the past. And I commend them for taking the positive attitude and really making it work in the benefit of our kids. If it was not for our tremendous staff, this would not be possible. We know the reductions of close to one point six million dollars has put a lot on the back of our teachers and our support staff, and we could not do this without their support. So equally, I'd like to commend the administrators for the smooth start. They've been working extremely hard over the summer to put procedures into place. And as I've mentioned on our general staff meeting day, and going into my fifteenth year in the district, I believe this is the first time in two consecutive years we've had the same administrative team for two, two years in a row. And so I appreciate their support and would not be able to kick the school year off as well as they had without, without their efforts. Happy to report that as of right now, enrollment shows a slight increase over last year, which is a positive, and we hope to, the attendance so far has been very good and we hope to continue those efforts. At this time, I'm going to ask Mrs. Stanfield to speak briefly on something you've been hearing called the third grade reading guarantee. And this is something that was recently came down the pipe this summer through an updated bill. And I'm going to turn it over to Donna, but I will tell you that we had a meeting this morning with the elementary administration, Deb Hoover, our literacy coordinator, Donna Stanfield, our curriculum director, myself, and you'll see that we're much further ahead than a lot of school districts because of the work that we've been doing with our early literacy. So at this time, I'll ask Donna to give a brief overview of the third grade guarantee.
Thank you, Superintendent Kimmel. Board members, Senate Bill 316, and like Mr. Kimmel stated, this came through the summer. Bottom line is all students entering third grade must demonstrate a certain level of competency in reading before they're allowed to advance now to fourth grade. Many years ago, when we had the proficiency test, they had a fourth grade guarantee. Well, they've put many steps in place here, so before students are permitted to move on to fourth grade, they have to demonstrate a level of competency in reading. And they have given us a whole list of litany things that we must do in the schools in order to meet this law. The first one being every student in grades K through three must be assessed by September thirtieth as their reading levels, and the parents must be notified if their children are not on track. There are a couple things, since this is the first year, the state is now allowing us to choose what diagnostic instrument we would want to use in our district. And you just heard Mr. Kimmel talk about the cuts that we've made and more and more things are being added to our teachers' plates. I'm here to say that our teachers have already been doing these things. And I'm very, very proud of Deb Hoover and the work she has done with our literacy programs in the elementary and at the secondary because it has put us in a great position. We already have a diagnostic instrument available. Matter of fact, we have more than one. We have DRA, II, and DIBELS. So we've already been getting those. All of our students in K three will be assessed, and we already had it on the schedule on our district testing schedule, to be completed by September thirtieth, before we even knew this bill occurred. If your child is shown to be below, not on track, we must notify every parent of their child's reading deficiency. We have to give the parent notification of what services are being provided, what services are provided within the school and options that they can obtain outside of the school. We have to begin a reading plan and monitoring has to be in place within sixty days of a student being identified as reading below level. The board, you will see in the near future, policies and administrative guidelines that have to now be written and adjusted to accommodate this new law. So that will be there. Just this afternoon, Mr. Kimmel forwarded an email and we had to fill out, which is already completed, to the state, different instruments that we use to identify these students. And right now, the state is gathering that information, so this year we're allowed to select our instrument and they're going to compile that. So next year, they're going to tell us exactly what instruments we're allowed to use. And I feel confident, and as Mr. Kimmel said, Mrs. Hoover, myself, and administrators at the elementary, we met and we feel DRA or DIBELS, those are going to be on there. They're such nationally known assessments that we should be in good shape. So if a student is deemed that they are not competent at reading level by grade three, they will be retained and will not go on to grade four. We will be required to let the state know how many of those students there are that are on this reading plan and the monitoring, what we're doing to monitor them. If a child is retained, is law that they have to receive an additional ninety minutes a day in reading, intensive reading intervention. So some of those interventions include small group instruction. And what I say is when I'm going down through some of these interventions that they're requiring, I feel our teachers should be very proud of themselves for being proactive in this Deb Hoover, the plan that she has pushed forth with our reading. We already have, with our parapros, that we were able to have guided reading, small group instruction. We have flexible grouping already taking place, reduced teacher-student ratio with our parapros, and they work with small groups, that has reduced their instruction for those students. We also have to have frequent monitoring and frequent progress monitoring. Our parapros with the DIBELS, they do weekly, plus all students K two have benchmarking three times a year. We have instituted several programs through the generosity of Mr. Burke and the Twenty First Century with Fast Forward, which provides a specific intervention and reading assistant, Fast Forward and Reading Assistant, that meets the student's specific deficiencies in reading, and it can't be just reading intervention. It has to be geared to the specific skill that they're missing. They talk about summer reading camp. We have been doing that for the last couple of years, and I noticed that Mrs. Hoover sent out an email to all the teachers saying, hey, get the kids to bring their things in for prizes. That's already been there. An extended school day, we have that in place with our Twenty First Century. So again, many of the things that this new law is requiring, even though we have fewer staff, we've been doing all along. We worked on this afternoon, there's a brochure that we send home and we did last year notifying the parents after each one of these assessments are given, where their child is with DIBELS, with DRA, as well as math, we included. We tell them what the skills are for each one of those. So we had to tweak it to add a few things that encompass this new law. So I think that we're pretty well set and that there's going to be a few more changes that we need to do, but we've got a good head start and I think we're way ahead, talking with the other county schools and around the region. You know, many of them don't even have a diagnostic tool that they're using on a consistent basis and a reporting form for the parents that they're aware of. So I'm very pleased to say with this coming along, that we're in good shape. Now, there are some exceptions to the students being retained, okay? For just this first year and only this school year, because this is sort of like a pilot, if a student is not reading at grade level, if the teacher and the principal feel that the student will be successful in fourth grade academically, they can be passed on, or promoted, I should say, promoted. If they're promoted during fourth grade, they must continue to receive that intensive intervention in reading all through fourth grade. Okay? Now, for the next year, when everything becomes final, there's a few more changes. There are some exceptions. Number one, our ELL students. Currently, when they take a state assessment such as the OAA or OGT, they are exempt their first year from taking that assessment. This law says they're exempt for two years, as long as they, you know, their first two years in the United States. So that gives them an additional year. Secondly, our special education students, they can have written into their IP exempt from retention, if that's in their IP and it's deemed, you know, necessary. We can also, they have a clause in there, let's say the students are not reading at grade level, we can propose an alternative reading assessment other than the OAA when it comes through and the child's deemed that they're not at reading level. So that's there. Also, if you have students that have been retained before third grade already, you know, they just needed that extra year. So if a child has already been retained and has been receiving an intensive intervention for two years, we're not going to retain them a second time. So there are provisions that are in there for some exceptions. But the bottom line is with this new third grade reading guarantee, bottom line is students are to be reading at grade level before they can be promoted to fourth grade. And I think it says a lot to each and every one of you with the faith that you have put in with the times that they are to keeping our reading program, our literacy coach, our parapros, to help with this because you can see with your proactive and with our proactive courses here at school, this would have been a nightmare for our teachers. It's already going to be something for them to adjust to and add it on because they're going to have that fear, you know, hey, my kids aren't on, you know, on grade level. So I'm feeling very positive that we're in good shape in, in moving forward from this Senate Bill 316, third grade reading guarantee. Questions about it? This will be shared more intensively next week at the orientation at the elementary when the parents come in. There's orientations for each grade level, so we want them to hear about it and so they don't get that letter firsthand of saying, wow, your child's not reading at grade level, boom, that's the first thing. So we want to let them know about it at that orientation.
So we're as prepared as we possibly can be at this time, moving forward?
I think that we're in really good shape, yes, because our parents are used to seeing DRA scores come down the pike. Now, like little things that, when we send those reports home, we have a bracket of where a child is for, this is where they, for kindergarten, they have to cover this much. We just added like, this is where your child is now, are they at target? And so halfway through the year, they better be halfway through. And so we've added little things like that to let the parent know and give them progress reports all along in case a child would slip. And so, yes.
So by, let's say, the first part of October, we should know exactly where we stand with interventions for everyone in the district?
Because by law, we have to have everyone tested in K three by September thirtieth. And we had already, before we even knew this, we had put together a testing schedule for the district for every child to be tested with DRAs. And I will say that this is our first year that we've ever done that with our kindergarten students coming in. We had been doing this, excuse me, all along with all the students, and we do DRA testing all the way through the secondary up to grade eight, including grade eight. And last year, our kindergarten teacher said, wait, we've got some students that can come in ready to read. So they said, this year, when we do kindergarten screening, we're going to assess them the first day. So our kindergarten students right now are all completed, they're tested, they've been tested on Crawl, which is the prerequisite, they are preschool standards that they have to have coming into kindergarten. They've all been assessed on that. They've all been assessed on DRA too, this is the reading developmental. They've all had a math assessment, so I think we're in great shape there. And all the other grades will have this done, K three, before September thirtieth, and parents will be notified.
From what you mentioned, you said that student isn't on grade level, but the building principal and the teacher think that the student can perform the academic work in the fourth grade, they can have that student promoted?
For this year, yes.
Now, does the parent have to say one way or the other with that? Can they say, do they have the right to either agree or disagree with that? Does that carry any weight with that recommendation? Or is it too early to?
I haven't seen, I haven't seen that put to a test yet, you know, but the law says.
One of the things that the law requires and that we want to make sure we're continually growing is the early involvement there in developing that intervention plan. So it will not be a shock coming the end of the third grade year if a kid's not performing on, 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 on grade level in reading. So, you know, from the parent's standpoint, I guess, or from administrative standpoint, all we do is provide as much information as we can early and often if a kid's behind what interventions we've tried to provide. And we hope that at that point, when it comes to the discussion of retention, it's not anything new and that they've seen that we've tried everything we can and that maybe a repeating third grade again will, will benefit the student. So, you know, it's going to be open communication early on.
In these brochures, parents should be used to seeing them because we passed, we were proactive and did them last year. We have a section on there that we've added for, because of this new law, to have them tear off and say, I'm aware of my child's reading ability. And we want all of those, for the first time, will be sent home to every student in K two prior to parent-teacher conferences so that when the parents come to parent-teacher conferences, as Mr. Kimmel alluded to, they will sit down together. And we've listed all the different kinds of interventions that are available that would best meet their child's need, and together they will sit there and determine that, the first time in parent-teacher conferences this year.
As, as a parent of a fourth grader in our district and a secondary in our district, I will tell you- district, I will tell you that in our household, being married to a first grade teacher, we find more value in the DRA report than we do on the report card. Because what they've done is they've, it's a non, it takes the subjective part out of it. Sometimes with letter grade or S or U, you know, there's a lot of it's, well, yeah, I think they can do this or no, they can't do this, but with DRA, it gives you an accurate picture of where that student's at with their reading ability. And then what I've seen is our teachers be able to then provide the instruction that meets the kid at that level. And so, kids are not all grouped and reading the same book. There might be four different groups within the same classroom. There might be groups that are, that are two different classrooms, are getting their highest kids together, the middle kids together, and their lowest kids together, developing groups from there. And the materials that they're selecting is based on where they're at. And when we go to the library now this summer, we know what reading level our kids are at and are able to pick out books based on those reading levels. So to me, it provides a great tool for our parents, a great tool for our teachers to be able to customize the individual instruction that our students need. So I'm very proud of the work that our staff, in fact, the work that OD now is requiring that we do kind of gives us a little bit of, validates the work that we've been doing, I believe.
So let me understand, to be promoted to fourth grade after next year, students have to be proficient or above on their reading OAA?
They're going to institute over time. And first one is going to be limited, okay? So anybody that's limited, that's what their criteria is going to be. Then they're going to move it up over the time from limited up to proficient, especially with the new assessments coming on board and going from a five-level criteria to a three-level. So they're instituting what that criteria of not being at grade level.
Is limited the lowest?
Yes.
So it's limited or basic?
Yes.
Limited, basic, efficient.
So based on our most recent results, how many students are in that position or would be?
I'll let you know before you leave today.
Yeah, we had, we had roughly, we had roughly between 20 and 25 students that were not proficient in the third grade spring reading OAA. Now, to break it down into those lower two categories, Don's going to be able to look it up pretty quickly, but we, you know, we had about, we were approaching about 68 percent. And so, we have about 25 students that were not proficient. But that would not, at least the way the criteria is right now, there would be another subgroup there that we wouldn't worry about. The other thing that I'm not sure if Don mentioned is that there is, with regards to our students on IEP, there can be a similar statement like we did with the OGT, where a kid could be exempt from the consequences if not graduating, if they did not pass all five parts of OGT. That same exemption can be put into an IEP of a third grade student.
Well, I certainly am an advocate for putting as much resources at the elementary to get kids to reading on a level by the end of third grade as we can. I think that's an admirable goal to have. However, I got to tell you that, to me, in some ways, this is just another example of an unfunded mandate that's being put upon us by the state legislature. They got this idea from the state of Florida. The difference is, in Florida, Florida's invested a great deal of money into early childhood education, a great deal of money into small class sizes leading up to the third grade. In Ohio, we're cutting early childhood, we're moving away from small class sizes. And so I just have some real issues with this kind of being forced on us. I applaud all the things we're doing.
I, well, they want, yeah.
It goes even further. Here's a direct statement out of here. The district must offer the option for students to receive reading intervention services from one or more providers other than the district. Districts will screen and approve any provider offered and pay and be paid for by the district. So not only is it the additional resources required within our district, we have to offer services outside of our district and we're required to pay for those services. So.
They have a grant available, which has not yet been released to us, and it is due by December 31st.
It'll be a competitive grant.
It's going to be competitive.
It won't be based on...
This isn't the only mandate of Centralville 316, right? This is just one of the many that come down the Centralville 316.
Correct.
And not a single one of them comes with any type of funding, correct?
And like what Mr. Kimmel just said, as far as having to go to outside sources, was very similar to the SES that we've had to provide the last few years. They disbanded that just because they realized a lot of the vendors were not providing adequate services and, but yet taking millions of dollars each year from these millions, just, you know, if you're talking $60 an hour per kid.
But how does this stop that in any way, shape, or form? We screen, but we're required to pay for, so these people can come and pass the screening and then not provide adequate education to our kids?
It does.
And we had to put this in the new letter, telling every parent, when this goes home, any child that's not at level, we had to let the parent know right there. We had to put it right out there in front.
Our hope is that we can provide a good enough program in our buildings with our resources, the parent would not say, I choose to do all the things you're doing already, along with going and doing A, B, and C outside of the district, because we're going to be able to provide intense intervention for these kids. So.
We have that.
We have it. We'll continue to do that.
Twenty-three students.
Well, and the other thing that I find objectionable from a child development perspective is retaining a kid at the end of third grade is not a good thing socially or academically. You know, the old thing is, if you're going to retain a kid, it ought to be prior to them coming to school or within their first couple of grades, not at the end of the third grade. And if the state had any sense, they again, would give us the resources to intervene and have the small class sizes and preschool, kindergarten, first grade, to get these kids moving back.
Well, I can just object to the assumption that just because you're on level to grade three, that you're going to continue on that as you progress. I mean, don't get me wrong, I think a third grade, grade two is great, but what about fourth grade? What about you fall behind in fifth grade?
We talked about that.
Do we have a guarantee that way too?
At the younger grades. What if I'm on target in second grade all along? Something, there's family crisis that can occur even within the third grade. So just because I'm above grade level at the beginning of the year, that's why we have always had progress monitoring in between times to keep monitoring that child all year long so that they didn't dip, because it can happen.
And then we have RTI, RTI process, response intervention, can come in and help with those situations.
Yes.
And then they say that a lot of these interventions should be offered in an extended school day, but all the monies for that are competitive. And you're not guaranteed those funds. So if you're not, you know, if you're not successful like we were in the secondary this year, where do those funds come from? Because it takes, I mean, a lot of money to extend those school days to pay for that.
You know, we're somewhat at a dispensary, we don't have a grant writer. You know, we're not in the business of writing grants for, this is educating kids. And some of the larger school districts, they have people that that's all they do, you know, and I'm confident that Mr. Burke carving out with his team to write that after school grant was an appropriate grant, should have been funded. But we got some word back that no grant, they had a current after-school program, was refunded. They had advertised that, oh, 50 grants they awarded, all were brand-new grants. None of them were renewed. So I just wish that if that's in the direction they want ahead, that they would tell us upfront, so that we don't waste the resources upfront, because it takes a lot of effort to put together a grant.
As I said, there were 23 students, they're current fourth graders, but out of those 23, 12 were special needs students, special education, so that would leave 11.
Out of the grand total of how many?
I, I didn't.
Out of the grand total of how many students? 11 out of, what is the...
What's fourth grade numbers right now?
Fourth grade is somewhere near 120.
So 11 out of 120.
And it'd be interesting to see then, how many of those 11 were retained at one other time.
Yeah.
As it would eliminate them being retained.
At least three or one, is that true?
You'd only be retained one time.
Right.
So.
Okay. So you never hit, you never hit the third grade level, but if you've been retained already, you just keep on pushing the pressure.
We don't really mind that you can't read on that, but we'll just let you go.
Yeah, we'll just let you go.
There's still going to be intervention.
Oh, I know. There will.
But the state doesn't care, so.
As I look at these 11, as I look at these 11, some of them are already in the RTI process. I recognize names that are on here, so they're already getting assistance as much as we can. You know, we're doing our best, so.
Absolutely. And I don't want to prolong the discussion, but Adam mentioned, you know, this isn't the only unfunded mandate. I mean, just take, I think everybody would agree that teacher evaluation is an important thing, that every teacher ought to be evaluated every year, that would be a positive thing, I think. But I don't know that we have the capacity or the resources to do that. I don't know that most districts do, because of the reductions that we're making administratively and otherwise. And I have more and more question whether we as a district, do we have the capacity, do we have the resources to meet those expectations? And I hope one of the things that comes out of our meeting with the community next month is, you know, what are your expectations? And if they're up here and we're here, folks, we need the resources from the community to achieve those things. And we're going to need to have a conversation about that, because we cannot keep cutting and reducing our way to excellence, there's no way to do that. And there's lots of forces who are preventing us from doing that. Okay, anything else?
That concludes my report, and thank you, Mrs. Stoneville and team, for your input.
Next item on the agenda is opportunity to address the board. Is there anyone out there that wishes to do so at this time? Next item on the agenda, personnel certified staff. Mr. Kimmel, your recommendations?
Yes, my recommendation that the board approve personnel certified staff items A through C.
And of course, A is, and C are from the agenda. Would there be a motion to approve personnel certified staff items?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion on those items? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Stone? Yes. Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Superintendent Kimmel, next on the agenda, personnel classified staff items, your recommendations?
I recommend that the Board of Education approve items A and B from the agenda under the personnel classified staff section.
Would there be a motion to do so?
So moved.
Support.
Discussion on those items? Roll call.
Mrs. Stone? Yes. Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
And next to the business items, Superintendent Kimmel?
It's my recommendation that the Board of Education approve items A through D under the business section of the agenda.
Would there be a motion in support? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on those items? Roll call.
Mrs. Stone? Yes. Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda, just under the discussion section, Central Region Fall Conference on Wednesday, September 26th. I assume someone would like to know who will be attending?
Yeah, right now, it's the Central Fall Regional, Fall Conference on September 26th. Our Backpack Program is receiving a plaque that evening, and so we have invited the committee to attend with the board and administration at night. And we do have four members of the Backpack Committee attending that. And due to the generosity of SEDEXO, they're picking up the cost of the meeting at. So want to thank SEDEXO for that support and just have a couple of you that let me know whether or not you're able to attend, so that...
Yes, sir.
And do you know your agenda, your schedule yet?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I'll be attending.
Okay, we have nine total right now, I believe a table is eight or nine. So we'll reserve a full table, and if you're able to make it, great. If not, we understand. But we'll not change our reservation, we'll reserve tables.
Okay, anything else in the discussion section of the agenda? Communications? Okay. Any announcements, for the good of the order?
I'd just like to announce that next Friday, August 31st is waiver day. Staff will be in session and students will not be. So look forward to the professional development for that day.
And our state of the schools?
Oh, yeah, thanks, Donna. We can work on that for some. We have our annual State of Schools address that'll be Monday evening, following the secondary open house, starts at 6:00. State of Schools starts at 7:00. We invite the entire community to attend that roughly hour meeting to receive an update on our strategic plan for the district, along with discussions about what they expect from the school district. Following that up, there is a couple of open houses at the elementary next week, I believe. K through 2 is on Tuesday evening and grade...
K through 1.
K through 1. And then 2nd through 5th is on Thursday evening. And those letters, I believe, are going home the next couple of days, and that information was communicated in smoke signals, off the website, and news and media releases.
Any other announcements?
Just want to thank Mr. Henderson and Mr. Gold, who's not here this evening, for taking the board around, showing us the building instead of our last, after our last special meeting report.
I do have one question for Mr. Henderson. When will we be getting a new student to attend meetings?
I'd like to jump in. I was up in Jeff Fisher's government class this week, and they are going to be selecting at least one representative. Because of block scheduling last year, we had two different semesters of government, so they, we had two separate representatives. I encouraged them to split up and also, you know, government's a year long now, to do a first semester representative and a second semester representative. So I'm sorry to jump in, but I was able to strike that conversation with Mr. Fisher, bearing in his government classes, talked a little bit about what the expectations would be, and we hope to have a representative this September meeting. So, and I'll, Mr. Henderson, follow back up with Mr. Fisher and see who that may be.
Any other announcements? Well, if there are no other announcements, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting into executive session for the purpose of preparing for negotiations with no board action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Stone? Yes. Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?